And we are now live. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order at this time and ask if there's any declaration of interest. Not seeing any, I will move along to the land acknowledgement statement. The town of East Goulunbury recognizes and acknowledges the lands originally used and occupied by the First Peoples of the Williams Treaty, First Nations, and other indigenous peoples. And on behalf of council, I thank them for sharing this land. We also acknowledge the Chipewas of Georgina Island, First Nations, as East Goulunbury's closest First Nation community, and recognize the unique relationship the Chipewas have with the lands and the waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental stewards of these lands, and we join them in these responsibilities. I am at item D in our agenda, and this is community announcements. As we approach the end of the school year, I want to extend congratulations to all students and wish everyone a safe and enjoyable summer. The Sharon Temple in the town of East Goulunbury has some wonderful Canada Day events planned for June 31st, 30th. Hope to see everyone out there to enjoy the festivities. At this time, are there any community announcements from members of council? I'll start at this end. Go ahead, please.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank the staff and some councillors who joined me this weekend. I'm the Chair of DIAC, and we were able to participate in the York Pride Parade that was in Newmarket. And honestly, it was an incredible time, great experience. And I just think about how important it is to be a part of something like that. And, you know, when we were marching and going down the street, it hit me hearing "thank you." At the beginning, it didn't hit me in the way. I just thought people were saying "thank you." And as I got halfway down and hearing the considerable "thank yous," the fact that we are marching to feel accepted and be accepted in a society today is something that shouldn't have to happen, but I'm glad that we, as we're a part of it in EG, we're leaders with that. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Lahey, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Mayor. I have several announcements. It's a very busy time of year. York Region is hosting an information session on access to high-speed internet in East Goulunbury on June 21st from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the EG Sports Complex. Residents can speak to York Net staff about plans to bring fiber to EG. On Saturday, June 24th, at 12:00 noon, you're invited to celebrate the official opening of the outdoor pickleball courts in Mount Albert. Join us at the Ross Family Complex behind the library to enjoy snacks, refreshments, pickleball instruction, music, and giveaways. On Tuesday, June 27th, there will be an opportunity for the public to give feedback on the design plans for the Mount Albert Revitalization Project between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. at the Main Street Community Center in Mount Albert. Please come out and have your say on what you would like the downtown to look like. And on Thursday, July 6th, in conjunction with the farmer's market, from 2:00 p.m. till 7:00 p.m., there will be a special event taking place called "Celebrating the Arts," which is organized by the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Please come out to enjoy entertainment, talent, and all of the sights and sounds that day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of council? Councillor Roy DiClemente, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Queensville Sharon Community Group is hosting a family bike ride and walk on one of our trails in Sharon. It's this Saturday, the 24th, at 10:30. And the group, so you can walk or ride your bike. There's going to be guides for each of those modes of transport, and they're starting at the Radial Line Park, which is just at Morel Boulevard and Mount Albert Road. So, they'll be using the Radial Line trails.
Thank you. Anyone else have announcements? Councillor Cruthers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. On June 28th, the town is hosting a public information center in Hall Landing about the Young Street revitalization, and that's at the Hall Landing Library. And on the 29th, we're celebrating Pride at the farmer's market. And myself and Christine Glenn are going to do an inclusive storytime, and there's lots of other events taking place from 2:00 to 7:00 that day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? I'm not seeing any. Yes, Canada Day was July 1st. I looked at that. Go from there. Okay. We're now under item E, deputations. A reminder that deputations are limited to five minutes, and I ask those speaking today to respect the time provided to them. In addition, to maintain both a respectful and positive environment for everyone, I ask those in attendance to refrain from engaging in discourteous or inappropriate behavior that would negatively affect the committee deliberations. This includes verbal outbursts, clapping, or any other activity that would disrupt today's meeting. On behalf of council, I thank those who are attending today's meeting, both in person and virtually, for your interest in the town's business. As council members, we are elected to represent our community. We encourage positive and respectful dialogue and look forward to hearing your deputations as part of this process. With that, I will now go through the deputation list and invite individuals, deputants, to come to the podium. The first one I have is Jay Gamble, making a deputation to committee regarding diversity, inclusivity, and equity. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Lahey, do I have a second there? Oh, I don't need a second. We're in committee. With that, I will ask Mr. Gamble. Oh, there you are. You've made it all the way up there. Thank you.
I was in incognito mode.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much. Welcome. Good to have you with us today.
I wonder if I may ask for a 20- to 30-second freebie preamble just before I start.
Well, let's still, once you're on the microphone, you're moving along. So, if that's part of your deputation, then certainly go ahead.
Well, just something to explain.
That's fine. You go ahead. Like I said, if that's part of your deputation, then please continue.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councillors, audience, and anyone who's listening on Zoom. This deputation, while it may seem decidedly pointed, is meant to bring attention to the misinterpretation of common terms. Additionally, it's a wake-up call to the importance of free speech in order to maintain a functional democracy. In order to maintain the aforementioned principles, it is sometimes necessary to identify where we are failing. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. Principles to live by, not mere words. Diversity, the condition of having or being composed of differing elements. Variety, especially the inclusion of people of different races, cultures, et cetera, in a group or organization. Inclusivity, I'm going to spin through some of these because the sides are self-explanatory. But basically, including all types and treating them fairly and equally. Equity, the state or quality of being just and fair. Sham, something false or empty that is purported to be genuine. Hypocrisy, deceitfulness or pretense. Previous meeting councillor stated it would be a sham to have another public session. I believe that was on the sustainability plan, when the decision was already made. That is, thank you to the councillor who did that. They pointed out a very real problem. Recent East Goulunbury examples. It was an inoculation clinic at the Sharon Canada Room. A group of people presented information on efficacy, death rates, VAERS data, risks versus benefits. They were ordered off the premises, and the police were called. That, I'm sorry, cannot possibly be diversity and inclusion, or nor equity. This deputation was postponed by two weeks. Why? The deputation materials were not submitted eight days prior to the meeting, despite my assurances it would be ready. According to our procedures, residents have until 4:30 on Friday preceding the Tuesday of the meeting. That's not eight days. So, I would say this proposal, this deputation, was unduly delayed. In addition, residents have but 24 hours to research and document a request for a deputation. In other words, Thursday at noon, the agenda is published. You have until Friday at noon to request a deputation. Well, people are working. They probably don't see it till at least 6:00 p.m. Thursday. They have maybe till 10:00 p.m. Thursday night, and then they have to go back to work. That's hardly a sufficient time to prepare, when council has asked that we give them time to prepare when making a deputation. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. And really, I submit the proper title would be "an advisement of deputation" as opposed to a request, but that's another issue. In a strategic plan deputation recently, I was questioned the reason for that night's high physical attendance. Now, that was apparently against procedures. You don't ask anybody in the audience anything. However, council voted to unanimously say, okay, you've got, you can answer the question. My answer was 15-minute cities. And the councillor in question, "I don't understand what you mean." Said, "Well, sustainability plan is a very broad plan with no costing, no parameters to speak of. It's just, hey, we're going to do this. We'll flesh it out as we go." The problem was it mentioned the word 15-minute cities. To people who are aware of what's going on today, 15-minute cities have a very special meaning. Anyway, within, I said, "I'll have to give a bit of an explanation as to what I mean." So, I started, and within 20 seconds, I was interrupted, saying, "We're not comfortable with this decision, the way this direction is going." End of discussion. And I apologize for being quite so pointed. But one person in the audience, and we have no idea who he was, a gentleman, stood up and said, "May I ask a question, please?" And he received a very egregious "no" as an answer. Not, "I'm sorry, sir. Council procedures do not permit that." Just a very rude response. That, I thought, was terribly unparliamentary, shall we say? Prior examples. In 2019, when we were fighting the environmental planning, East Goulunbury and the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Area gave a presentation, while the East Goulunbury Landowners Association, representing 400 members, was denied to present an alternate view. This is not democracy. This is not free speech. We have a problem. Deputation meeting restrictions. As I said, only 24 hours after it's announced. Only five minutes to speak. Very little can be accomplished in five minutes. Meetings during the day guarantee poor attendance. Who can attend? Retired people? Anyone who's working can't attend. So, you're not going to get much of an attendance. The audience is prevented from saying anything. Curiously, contentious deputations are not followed by any questions from council, generally speaking. That has been my experience lately, anyway. I'd just like to point out, basically, the Charter of Rights and Freedoms.
Could you wrap up, please?
Okay. The Bill of Rights guarantees you the freedom of thought, opinion, belief, and expression. There are moves afoot to kill diversity, equity, and inclusion, because the words have been, excuse the expression, bastardized. They mean now the opposite of what they should mean. In 1984, the book 1984 by George Orwell, that, I can't get the exact quote here. Oh, sorry, I don't have enough time to get there.
Your five minutes are up. I'm sorry.
I think my point has been made. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a mover? And it's, oh, councillor Lahey had moved it. We do not have a vote to receive. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Point taken.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I want to state how much I appreciate my council colleagues listening to a voice with a differing opinion. The deputant is a taxpayer and entitled to express his opinion. So, thank you for listening respectfully to that.
Okay. Since I do not have the votes to receive, I will move to item two on the agenda. V. Octar Borrel, Senior Vice President, Averton, making a deputation to committee regarding item 1.2, Joint Community Infrastructure and Environmental Services and Development Services Report, CIES 2023-17, Proposed Village Green, Averton, Working Hours. Welcome. Good to have you with us today.
Yes, good afternoon. Vani Altaborg on behalf of Village Green and Averton. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council, for granting us the opportunity to make this deputation. My deputation today is a follow-up to my previous deputation from June 6th. Royal Council directed staff to engage in discussions with Averton regarding the temporary allowance of work. While we were optimistic that we were heading in the right direction, I regret to inform you that we had not had the opportunity to contribute to the staff report that is before you today on item 1.2. However, we did have an opportunity to speak with your staff yesterday to discuss the issues and our concerns. First and foremost, we would like to express our gratitude to staff for preparing the report and recommending the temporary allowance for interior works from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturdays, and for taking the time to meet with us yesterday. This is definitely a helpful step. However, we have several concerns that we believe warrant further consideration and were to be brought up in this discussion. The proposed motion is unclear in its wording. While it explicitly mentions indoor work, it also states that the work must be conducted in accordance with the noise bylaw. The noise bylaw does not differentiate between interior and exterior works, leading to confusion and potential conflicts in interpretation. Note that Averton is not seeking any preferential treatment and is simply requesting to operate in accordance with the noise bylaw that is in place townwide. in accordance with the noise bylaw that is in place townwide. Without aligning to the noise bylaw, there is unnecessary confusion, not only amongst staff and trades, but also how the restrictions will impact the new homeowners. Simply stating conformity to the existing bylaw will simplify everyone's role moving forward. With respect to the town imposing of security services to our site, it has proven to be ineffective and porous of resources. Security services were imposed on our site prior to the issuance of any formal infractions. While security was on duty, we are unclear as to their mandate, as they did not restrict access to the site, and subsequently, a ticket was issued by bylaw enforcement. The ticket was based on a resident's complaint alleging that we contravened the bylaw, as opposed to an account of the assigned guard on duty. We want to formally request removal of the security services, as they have proven to be ineffective, have breached security by removing fencing and trespassing onto the property, and have also publicly urinated on the building materials stored on site. Averton, as well as our trade partners, are committed to abiding by the terms of the bylaw, and we will work diligently to operate in accordance with the provisions of the bylaw. We appreciate staff and council's consideration towards this temporary allowance and want to ensure that there is fair and equitable conduct during this period. Regarding the bylaw enforcement process, we have concerns about the issuance of tickets without valid grounds and inadequate investigation, as it appears that the baseless and biased ticketing that is unnecessarily determining, undermining the reputation of our company. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to present our deputation today and express our gratitude to the staff for their efforts in preparing this for staff report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there questions, are there questions with the deputant? Go ahead, councillor Crown, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to our deputant for appearing today. I appreciate the efforts you've made in the last two weeks. It's, I think it's, the Saturdays have been quiet, and the neighbors appreciate it. So I do thank you for, for working within the agreement as we have till now. The concern you mentioned about the security, breaching the gates and being on your, trespassing on your property, if, if you're not doing work on the weekends, the gates should be locked, shouldn't they? So if they're not locked, how would, if they were locked, how would the, the security trespass? I'm just, I don't understand this. Can you help me understand?
Through you, Madam Mayor. We have security video showing the security guard taking down panels of the fencing to access the property. Have his lunch, and a few other photos that we shared with your staff.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that. And then, I guess my only other question is, I don't know how the vote will go later today, but my question is, if, if council decides not to support the, the request to have Saturday work, will you still continue to abide by the original agreement of not working on Saturdays?
It's our obligation to do our best to enforce that.
Okay, I'll take that as a yes. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? It would seem to me that's very important for the ability to meet and discuss, and I know it's, it's ongoing, but I certainly feel that the doors should be open to, to meet and discuss, not, not have the doors closed. So I would encourage both sides to work together to come up with some solutions. It may be baby steps. It may not be as, as what we would like, or our residents would like, or you would like. But perhaps if we continue to move forward, we're going to get to the end result that we all want. So I would just ask that the discussion takes place as much as, as much as we can to, to work through today and, and make a difference for tomorrow. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, perhaps before you go, I didn't ask if there were any questions from members of council. I'm not sure. I didn't see anyone, but I just wanted to make sure. I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, thank you.
We know how to get in touch. Thank you very much. Could I have a mover to receive the presentation? Councillor Leahy, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. We are on to item F, and that's presentations. And at this time, I would ask Kevin DeFortes, Principal Architecture Inc., making a presentation to committee regarding Shops of Sharon, 19086 Leslie Street. Welcome. Good to have you with us today.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, and fellow members of council, also neighbors, community members. I would like to thank you for allowing me to come here today to present our urban design report as a summary of the location based of 19086 Leslie Street, which is the corner of Mount Albert and Leslie Road. We are extremely honored that we're still, just made it barely into the historic, the Heritage District corridor. However, with that, we, we'd like to present more or less what the look and feel that we've been working diligently with the prestige members of your planning department and all services throughout the town of East Goulunbury and the region of York Simcoe. So the site plan, we worked diligently with Victoria Moore and Margot Bejain, and Lawrence Cocke, too. And we come before you to present, number two, sorry, the overview of the lands on the corner, to make it part of East Goulunbury. We have come to council before. We have had a town, open town meeting. We have heard what everyone has to say, and we have tried to accommodate as many as possible in what we have done on our various revisions to the plan. The site is an MU5, which is a mixed use, and what we are aiming to do is to create a harmonious site that is eco-friendly, that is pet-friendly, that is bicycle-friendly, walk-friendly, that has residence, some commercial, and also some retail. The, sorry, next slide, if I may, please. So part of the site that we have designed has come through various examples of other locations and looks and feels, I guess we'll say, that we have taken from other areas, other buildings, and trying to grasp the best of all. Right now, we have 10 acres that's on that location, and we have made an unbelievable effort to try to create the height and the scale that would blend in and match with the rest. We purposely put the residents you'll see on the corner to match Rivera. We've taken some of their design, not their design, please, but their look and feel and colors to blend back in into ours. We have deliberately done the right heights that match up to the townhouses that are in the rear, that gently slope towards the front. We have no illuminated signage, we have no podium signage. We want it to look downtown, old town, Collingwood, Thornberry, Pembroke, items like that, with the, the old-time lamps, the black lamps with, with that look, and a very friendly, I would say, a very friendly walking about in the area. Our main goal on the next slide, as you'll see, sorry, I put that in just as the Sharon land, or land, just to point out where it is, and at the end, right adjacent and accompanying, right civic center, we are today. On the next site, this is our amassing plan to show the heights, how they blend in together with the rest of the location, and that they do not cause any shadowing, do not cause any wind, any tunnels, and we've done extensive studies on all that area. We've got ample parking, and the ample parking, as you'll see, quite a few on the surface has permeable parking that will allow for better water penetration going through. If I may, please. Thank you. We have tried to demonstrate leadership in sustainability. We have prepared, as I've just discussed, the parking spaces being, quite a few of them being permeable parking spaces. We have supplied two underwater tank systems, which are fairly massive, that you could basically walk in, to accumulate all the drainage from the roofs, from the eaves troughs, from the site into our drainage tanks and storm tanks, and treat them and reuse as part of watering the lawn, taking care of plants and people to use. We have also put parking EV stations for the people to use, free of charge, and we have made all the underground parkings available to have an EV station ready for them to plug in. We have also, on the northern part of the site, we have included, on that site, on the rooftops, all solar panels. On top of the other locations, they will be also solar-ready to prepare for that. Next slide, please. Going through the different buildings, as you'll see, we have retail, two, two-level retail. We have, on this location, we have shown that it can be accommodated for either a one large tenancy. You can almost see who it is. Or it can be divided, subdivided into smaller ones, if that's more the nature of where it's going to go. We have no backlit signage, we have the nice goose neck lamps that are showing, and very walk-friendly for all residents around. Next slide, please. Some of the looks and feels that we were thinking into this with a desirable brick that represents the historic, and the heritage historic downtown of a lot of towns in Canada, along with awnings, great lighting, but not to create pollution of lighting throughout our neighbors and the streets. We have also done the conveyance already and have given a tremendous amount of land to expanding both Leslie Street and Mount Albert to accommodate that. Next slide, please. We have, it's hard to, that's why I'm glad, I'd like to thank you from Margot and Victoria to give some samples of this, as color sometimes don't come up very well in a, in a slide. But at the same time, these brick, along with some ephesus, along with different materials to create commercial office and some small retail for local businesses in the area. Next slide, please. Part of the residential apartment condos to the north that were there, as we talked about, they are of smaller nature. They are approximately 1,000 square feet each, two levels. They have each in a spot underground for a parking. We have enough visitor parking in that area. We have tried to create rooftop solar, we have made large windows for everyone, and try to create a nice look and feel, along with a rooftop terrace, that would be very accommodating and very friendly. A shared entrance to come in and to allow. Next slide, please. And here is just a side and a cross-section, as you can notice, vehicles below ground, and they are only about four feet below ground and about three feet above ground with a walk-up. The units are separated with four units per site, per unit, sorry. Next, please. As an example, this is actually an Aurora at the corner of Wellington and Young Street. A perfect example of this, we just added a little bit more color to it. Next slide, please. The corner of Mount Albert and Judah Dome, we have created a eight-story mid-rise, stone look with brick and ephesus to accommodate, to match up with Rivera, that match perfectly with Rivera on the other side, and have the same heights and same everything that goes with it, and aligned properly. Next slide, please. That's the look there that we took with some help. On that also, there is retail on the ground floor, along with a gym, play, a party room, et cetera, et cetera. And we also have solar panels on the roof, along with a green roof that's on top of Next slide, please. Various samples of our color visioning that we've entailed to go into all the buildings and to create some sort of diversity. Next slide, please. Our proposed phasing. We understand allocation is an issue. And we are grateful that we are here, and understanding that through allocation, that it's not possible to get everything done in one, in one fell swoop. So what we have proposed through, with the, with planners and speaking with also the CAO, and with planning and Lawrence Cocke, is to retail location, the perimeter with the four levels, leaving the two inside buildings to be done at a future Phase Two. Also, by being smaller units with less washrooms, they consider only half allocations. And so they're considered apartment dwellings, and so they will be considered as through water flow and our recapture of quite a few of the items that are required, that will allow us to maintain a half-credit allocation. So for every unit that's there, we can only, we can, we can have half a credit for each one. So in the seven buildings that are currently there, there are 176 condo apartments, and therefore only require 88 of the allocation credits that are required. Phase Two, again, is just a continuation of those two buildings that will have an additional 68 apartment condos and 34 allocation credits. And we understand Phase Three, with another 226 apartments, will be at a future date, hopefully soon. In the meantime, what we'd like to also acknowledge is that because it will be empty, we will maintain that site, we will put grass down and additional parking for everyone to use, including the city, events that are happening, and allow whatever events that the city may want to use, that they would be allowed to use that, that portion of the property to do any event they would like. Sorry, last, I think the last slide here. And then, of course, just because we have to separate out, we're applying for a severance at the same time, and the three parcels to be severed. But the site plan is being applied for as one parcel. But the site plan is being applied for as one parcel. And I believe that's it. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have questions from members of council. Councilor Crothers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. You certainly check a lot of boxes, the permeable paving, the walkability, rainwater harvesting, solar-ready, it's all fantastic, but to me, nothing's more important than that combination of homes and the shops and services. So, you know, there's office space, there can be doctors and dentists, as well as pharmacies and all that kind of stuff, so thank you for that. My only question is on the condos that are, you know, towns are two floors and then two floors. The people who are on the upper two floors, do they have a way of reaching their unit without walking up two flights of stairs? I'm thinking all of us have been in a situation where we've broken something or had foot surgery or something, and I just can't imagine walking up that many flights of stairs.
I would say the answer is no, unfortunately, and I understand what you're saying. I think that what we were aiming for in doing this, and it can be any age, obviously, that that can happen to anybody, by creating a small entry into the, into covered veranda, we'll call it, inside with the four doors, but unfortunately, that unit will have to go up those stairs. Elevators just did not accommodate every, put elevators on every single one, just unfortunately didn't work. But what we were aiming for a little bit, and was a little bit of a need that we were talking with the town, is for an entry-level town home, not a town, but apartment home with multiple bedrooms to accommodate entry-level into the marketplace of housing, and to get people into that, into housing. And so unfortunately, to keep the cost, and to try to keep the cost at a level that everyone can afford these days, elevators at each location would have just threw it out of whack.
Okay, even an elevator down one end with, you know, verandas or something like a fire escape type walk or something like that?
I don't think the code would have allowed that, only because of the distances that you have. I'm not only, sorry, and just for the, for all, and thank you through you, Madam Mayor, the, I am not just the representative of the architecture on this, but I'm also part-owner of the property.
Okay, well, thank you. Like I said, it checks a lot of boxes, and that's my only question, but I assume that meets all of our requirements for accessibility and that, so I guess it has to be what it has to be.
It is within the OBC code, correct.
Go ahead, Councilor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to our presenter, I share the excitement, excuse me, with, about this proposal. It's very exciting, and it does check a lot of boxes. The one building you had, though, was a combination of condo and apartments?
Correct.
Help me understand, and forgive my ignorance, help me understand how a condo corporation would work within a building where you have apartments? So I would assume the condos would pay a condo fee. Would the apartments be subject to the same fee, or would they be exempt? Help me understand how that might work.
It is in the same methodology, that the condo units would be purchased by a retail client or an owner and rented out in the same manner as it would be for any apartment. They would be subject to a different zoning for the retail and a different tax rate, if I'm not mistaken, but it would be separated out, and they would be paying their proportionate share, and they have, and on top of that, in building, in the J Building, not only do we have underground parking in regards to one level of underground parking, but we are over-allocated for parking in that location by 79 parking spots. So we have quite a bit of parking available for other uses and for overages, especially because of retail and making sure that they cover each other off, and along with all the visitors that are coming in.
Okay, if I may have one more question. You mentioned on a previous slide that there would be EV charging stations, free of charge.
On the ground floor, on the top floor.
On the top floor, so does that mean that residents or patrons of the?
It will come, it will be done through the retail, I guess we'll call it, through their taxes, maintenance, and costs that way.
And that, but they won't be charged to?
Not for the above-ground ones, if people should use it, because it'll be mainly for retail and public use. It's going to be hard to maintain.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Councilor Johns, go ahead, please, then Councilor Foster.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm very excited to see this move forward. I think that when we talk about building complete communities and walkability, this is exactly what we like to see. And I think that you are not ignorant to the challenges of where we are as a municipality with regards to wastewater and our capacity and our ability to progress, and I just wanted to kind of take the opportunity to, again, to echo my comments, where I do feel that given that we're Canada's fastest-growing municipality in the last five years, the need for us to focus on commercial and industrial, and to have that build out our tax base, given that our wastewater management servicing is at capacity, and we don't have much allocation left. And so the perfect scenario, when we've got all the pipes open and waters running back and forth, I like, I can't wait to see this happen. I think from the responsibility of the municipality, I will continue to speak to the fact that we need to continue to champion commercial-industrial and see the growth of our employment lands. So thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Foster, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to make sure I got some numbers right here that I wrote down. You mentioned Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three.
Correct.
And you were talking about rental units, and I believe you said 176 in Phase One, 68 in Phase Two, and 226 in Phase Three. Are those numbers all rentals?
No.
Those are rentals and condos.
And condos, right. They could be rent, there'll be a mixture.
So as we stand now, what is the number of rental apartments that would be in those phases?
I guess with rental apartments, it'll vary throughout. It could be buildings from buildings, or it could go individually, as people mostly have. A lot of people do buy it as an investment and an opportunity to rent out. So saying a rental is going to be tough to determine what number of people would like to move in, and some people who would like to also purchase and to rent out themselves.
So none of these are purpose-built rentals at this point?
Not purpose-built rentals. We'd love to do a purpose-built rental, but I don't think it's a determination on the marketplace of where we are that people actually want to own their houses.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Roy DiClemente, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I, that was where my line of questioning was going. I was a little bit confused about what was condo and what was rental, but essentially what you're saying is these are condo buildings, and the format is condo, and some of those condominium units will be rented out by the owners, essentially.
Correct, yes.
I see, okay.
And there are opportunities that we have spoken to some, because we are not maintain, there are some that have shown up to, they'd like to buy a building and just do rentals for the whole building. And so that's been some opportunities that we've been talking with some already with people.
Great. I guess where I'd like to better understand is, because I've been here for a while, I was part of that initial, there was an application for a severance, and I'm just wondering what the status of that was. So there was a plan for a retirement home and an application for severance, and I'm just wondering where you are in that process. Has that been withdrawn, and you're just starting fresh?
Correct.
We're hitting the reset button.
Yes, we did, because through, as you know, we had put the condo in the rear, and people were not as enthused with that from the residents around. We've had a conversation, the town and planners, and I have had a conversation, and so we've moved it forward to the street to align with Rivera. Can it be a retirement residence going forward? Yes. There's a great opportunity to do that. With when built, I think some have just been a little gun-shy, but there is, I think, another opportunity that I think would be, I would love it to be that.
So you're reserving Phase Three for a future opportunity?
Right. The only problem lies is allocation again.
Everything relies on allocation, I think, unfortunately. I know that, you know, that my constituents have certainly asked often about what's happening on that quadrant and in that corner, and so I'm happy to see some additional investment being made. The issue of allocation is obviously one of heavy importance to the folks at this table, and obviously to you and your colleagues and on the other side of the equation. As far as feedback from my perspective, I love the idea that you're trying to match some of that heritage look and feel. Some of your drawings do show a little bit more contemporary, you know, the word contemporary is there, there's siding, there's things that are a little bit more modern, and so as you're refining your plans, I would appreciate it if you could have a little bit more of an eye to more stone and more heritage, to more heritage. I know you've got it, you've been listening to our staff.
Yes.
And I'd like to see you take it one step further, from my perspective, not the contemporary look, but certainly the, you know, the fact that you're adjacent to a heritage zone, and you want these buildings to fit in, and people who want to be in your stacked product as well as your condos. So thank you very much for your presentation today.
Thank you, Councilor.
Other questions, comments? I'm really pleased to see this in front of us today.
Thank you.
We've watched that field for quite some time, and many knocks on the door here with people with ideas, but it's been a long time since we've had someone in front of us, and thank you very much. I would echo Councilor Roy DiClemente's comment about heritage. We are so fortunate to have the Sharon Temple next door to us here and many heritage homes throughout this community, and if there is an opportunity to celebrate that, I know it would be appreciated.
Wonderful.
I'm not seeing any other questions or comments. Councilor Roy DiClemente, would you move this, please? All in favor? And that carried. Thank you very much for being with us today.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilors.
Thank you. We're at item G in our agenda today, and this is our part of our boards and groups, and I know we have some sitting in the wings here, if they would like to come forward, we'd love to hear from you. Welcome, good to have you with us today.
Thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Through you, Madam Mayor. May I have the opportunity to introduce Bev?
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Bev, for representing today the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee as Acting Chair, and for the benefit of my colleagues and staff, I'd like to briefly introduce Bev because of the numerous activities that she spearheads on behalf of the committee. She brings her talent as a professional painter and former art teacher to create something beautiful every time, every day here in East Columberry, and her work promoting the arts in our community extends beyond her organizing of the annual Holly Berry's Artisan Christmas Show to raise funds for the Holland Landing Lions Club, but also to serving as the Mount Albert Group of Artist President, constantly setting up art exhibitions at local venues to support other artists. So I'm looking forward today to your presentation on the paddle project that you've organized. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council, and town staff. Thank you, Councilor Leahy, for that nice introduction. This afternoon, I would like to talk to you about our committee's new signature art event. The paddle project is a signature art piece where residents are invited to create a personalized paddle to display near the entrance to their home, that everyone can enjoy and tourists will associate with our town. This is similar to the bicycles up in Brecken. Each resident will be given an opportunity to purchase a paddle at the farmer's market for $30. The funds collected will be used to purchase more of the 36-inch wooden paddles, which cost approximately $30. To jump-start this project, our committee would like to invite members of council and town staff to participate in a friendly competition. We respectfully request that you create a paddle, and it will be placed on display at the Tapestry of Taste in August. These paddles will be auctioned off, with proceeds going to a local town-approved charity. We will encourage all participating community members who purchase paddles to display their finished paddle at the Tapestry of Taste event for a chance to win a prize and recognition for their creativity. For those of you that are interested in participating, you can pick up your unfinished paddle.
I have a couple of vans.
Van us here.
You can pick up your unfinished paddle with painting instructions on the back of the postcard that's attached from the mayor's office. We ask that you decorate your paddle however you'd like. You can draw on it, you can stain it, carve it, burn it, glue things onto it, decorate it with anything that you can think of. You can even turn it into something else by adding to it. You're only limited by your own imagination. We certainly look forward to seeing your creations and ask that you drop your finished paddles off at the Recreation Department complex by August the 8th. This will give us an opportunity to varnish them in preparation for the auction. If you have any questions or concerns, my contact information, along with the instructions, is on the back of the postcard. We hope that members of the council will join us at the farmer's market on July the 6th for the celebrating of the arts event, where there will be an exciting lineup of activities and entertainment for you to enjoy. Thank you for allowing me to share the details of our new event with you today.
Thank you very much. Very exciting. I can see everybody trying to figure out what they would put on their paddle. Very interesting. That's terrific. Thank you so much. I'm sure that you'll have a big uptake on this. It's the kinds of things that people like to do in the summertime, and to have a contribution to a charity is even better at the end of the day. So thank you for being very creative.
You're very welcome.
Are there questions from members of council? Councilor Leahy, go ahead, please.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Bev, for the presentation, and count me in. I'm excited to get a paddle, and I'm already designing it in my mind. Would you share with the council and the audience why you chose a paddle to be the signature art event?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I wanted something that represented the town. I wanted something that was respectful of the indigenous community. I wanted something that was Canadiana, something that was durable and big enough that it provided enough space for someone to decorate it or create a work of art on it. We do have a lot of waterways in our town, so I thought that it kind of relates back to the communities that were here well before we were, that settled the land before we arrived.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Leahy, would you move this, please? Thank you, all in favor? And that's Carrie. Wonderful, ladies, thank you so much. I'm sure we'll see a lot of you over the summer.
We're dropping the paddles off now.
Okay.
So if you're eager, and if you need more, we can.
We have your number.
Yes, and we can get more.
Thank you so much. Yes, we're at administration now, item H. And Acting Director Gandy to present. Welcome, good to have you with us.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm pleased to be here to provide an update on the status of human resources activities since I was before council in April. At that time, I brought the draft East Gullumberry You Belong Employee Experience Strategy to council for review, and I'm pleased to say that we incorporated staff and council feedback into the document which we launched at the beginning of June. This marks a major milestone, and it bears repeating that none of this would have been possible without the collaboration of all staff departments and extended and senior management teams. I also want to acknowledge the contributions of the Human Resources Team, they're here, some of them, yes. Liz Norwood, Erin Smythe, Chris McPherson, and the Communications Team, Laura Hannah, Danielle Vernay, who's now Danielle Malzare, and Rachel Thompson. So thank you very much to the team who contributed to developing this strategy. EG You Belong is comprised of four themes, your experience, your career, Team EG, and our commitment. In the upcoming slides, I will describe our efforts in each of these areas, and I'll show how policy, modernization, and equity, diversity, and inclusion are the supporting pillars for those themes. But first, it's important to pause if we can just get to the next couple of slides. So this just shows us where we were in April, and now we are at the end of quite a long journey in that we've now launched EG You Belong. The next slide shows the themes that I just spoke of, but I'll be revisiting those in a few minutes. The next slide, please. So for first, it's important to pause and talk about some of the words that we used intentionally in the strategy. The word experience was used because it speaks to the employment journey that begins even before someone is hired, as they're considering where they're going to work, and it continues throughout their career with the town. The second term was used with intent as well, and that is the EG You Belong title. The title conveys the organization's commitment to creating a safe workplace where everyone feels seen, for their contributions, connected to coworkers, supported and proud of their work, and the organization, who doesn't want that? It's pretty simple, actually. Everything we do, from an HR perspective, must contribute to a culture of belonging. The four themes help to structure our efforts in policy, modernization, and EDI serve as pillars that support those themes. Before I provide an overview of what we're doing in relation to each of those themes, next slide, please. I also want to recognize that any new initiative can only be successful if it's communicated well and if people know about it. Our communications team developed a communications plan which includes all of the graphics that you see today, and those are going to be translated into graphics you'll start to see around the building, pull-up banners, new templates for some PowerPoint presentations, emails, and you'll see the cover there. It has the EG logo, but that's going to be replaced with a new staff photo, which we're hoping to take at the staff barbecue this week. So that is a holding spot, but will be translated to people very shortly. I also know the importance of showing, not just telling, about the program and any initiative that is launched. So every time we launch any type of activity or have any type of HR development, we're going to express how it relates to any one of the themes or a combination of the themes, and I'm going to demonstrate that in just a moment. So the next slide, moving right along. So your experience. The Your Experience theme reflects the need for stronger mental health support in the organization and a review of compensation and benefits. So this is what we've done since April. We've provided training to all staff through the Centre for Addiction and Mental Health, CAMH. We distributed information to staff about mental health supports. We initiated a social media campaign, and the graphic that you see here is part of that social media campaign. We've advanced the work on our multi-year accessibility plan. We've shared some information with the Accessibility Advisory Committee of Council, and we will be coming to council in the fall with a plan for review after we do some public consultation. We've provided AODA training for communications, HR, and administrative staff, so they've learned how to create accessible Word documents and other material that can be used with screen readers and other tools. And then although the slide shows the policy review is upcoming, we've actually started that work. So we've engaged with an external service provider who is helping us to update a lot of the policies that are definitely in need of updating. In the coming months, we're continuing our discussions with CAMH, and we are also exploring pregnancy parental leave top-up. That's something that staff have been saying to us for a very long time that is in need of updating, and a number of municipalities are actually undertaking that effort, some in the N6, in fact. And we're going to be bringing the multi-year accessibility plan to council, as I just mentioned. We are also initiating a part-time salary review, which we have to do because we currently haven't met the compliance requirements from an employment equity perspective, and so we need to do that, and we're undertaking that part-time salary review immediately. We are also going to be providing some de-escalation training through the Centre for Mental Health, Addiction for Mental Health, and that's going to happen in August and through the fall. Next slide, please. The Your Career theme focuses on how we will support staff through the hiring, onboarding, and career development process. I'm pleased to say we're making incredible progress on the career development review, which was formerly the performance review process, which will be available in a digital format. So before, it was very paper-based through PDF documents, but this will be done entirely digitally, and we will be launching that in the fall. And we've also drafted an online form which notifies all of the relevant departments that a new employee is starting. So there's already a process in place, but we're expanding that so that as soon as a new employee is starting, the person who has to arrange for furniture, the person in customer service who needs to know that the new person is there, anybody who needs to have a building fob changed or made available will know that that is happening and that employee is starting. And I'm also participating in an N6 initiative to establish a contract with training providers who can deliver training for all six municipalities. That is hopefully going to start to gain some momentum in the next couple of weeks. Some accomplishments under the Team, next slide, please. Some accomplishments under the Team EG theme included reports to senior management team and reports to council. Part of Team EG is to share the successes and advancements that we're making as an organization with each other and with council. I'm also pleased to inform council that we resumed the Labor Management Committee meetings with the EG Professional Firefighters Association, and just yesterday, we initiated an ECSS review, which I shared with council. So that work is underway. Not on this slide, but another accomplishment I'm pleased to say is that we're nearing the signing stage of an administrative services agreement with the East Gullumberry Public Library, and this agreement formalizes the relationship that's already on solid ground. It just spells out the human resources and finance support that the town and the library share. In the fall, we'll begin collective bargaining, I've mentioned that to council previously, and we will also share the results of the ECSS review with council, and we'll move to a much more progressive name for human resources, perhaps people and culture or something of that nature, but that's something that we will tackle in the coming months, not today. In addition to describing the accomplishment and work ahead, I'll also be providing updates regularly to council. I did so in April, I'm doing so today. We currently have 185 full-time employees and approximately 140 part-time and seasonal staff, and 66 paid on-call firefighters. We are monitoring our voluntary turnover rate. That's something that has been asked of us in the past, and we are looking at that on a regular basis now. Currently, our turnover rate stands at 4% for 2023. According to the Conference Board of Canada, the voluntary turnover rate for Canada-wide is 6.1%. It's 7.4% in Ontario and across all public administration, it's 3.4% that takes into account federal, provincial, municipal, public administration. So we're in and around the range, certainly lower than Canada and lower than the province, and in the same, I would say, vicinity of other public service institutions. In terms of recruitment, there's a lot of it. Since January, we conducted or in the process of conducting 52 recruitments, and that doesn't include summer camp positions or park staff. We hired 40 camp counselors, and for our parks operations, we hired 17 students and seven seasonal staff. One might be asking, why do we have 52 recruitments when we don't have such a high turnover rate? We have a lot of people moving within the organization. We have several people who are about to go on or on maternity leave in the organization. Each one of those requires staffing process to backfill, and then often that creates yet another backfill process. So it's a bit of a domino effect. I'm pleased that we have families that are growing and amongst our EG team, but that helps to explain why we have that many. There are, of course, full-time positions that council approved, and I'll get to that in the next slide. Among the recruitment that is underway, we're in the process of hiring three full-time firefighters. Our new associate solicitor was hired and begins on June 26th. Our new economic development manager will be starting on July 10th. And while we initiated a chief planner process, as we progressed through that process, we recognized that the specific departmental needs required a different approach, and so we will not be staffing that position as initially planned, but will continue to leverage contracted support as we work to fully build out that team. So the next slide shows a status. It's a bit small print here, but you'll have it in front of you on your screens, the status of an update of the positions that were funded through the 2023 budget process. Five have been completed, and others are either planned or in progress. We are absolutely welcoming to all of our new staff, anybody who's watching, and please share the news of anybody who's coming into EG as a new staff member, we're happy to have you here. The next slide is our commitment. So our commitment theme focuses on our efforts to communicate with staff on a regular basis and in different ways. It's also a commitment to reward and recognize staff for years of service and for the excellent work that they do. We've had two staff halls, two staff town halls recently, one focusing on mental health awareness with CAMH, and the other focused on pride, and both were very well received. We're also working towards streamlining our communications to staff by moving the employee announcements to a monthly document, which we're hoping to evolve and become an employee newsletter, so that's something to watch for. And we're also planning to resume the Years of Service Awards in the fall. Mayor, members of council, this concludes my presentation. I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. That's quite a list you've accomplished there in a short period of time. Thank you very much. Questions? Councillor Johns, go ahead, please.
Just wanted to, it seems like we're a somber, quiet bunch today, for whatever reason. I personally got a bit of a headache, but I don't want to detract from me saying wow and thank you, like I think from where we started in this process to where we are. I just think it's a long list of accomplishments, as the mayor was saying, in such a short period of time, and I think that all of the staff appreciate the work in your team that you guys have done in being able to start this process, which is so important for the culture of the organization. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Crowthers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this. You've done so much in such a short amount of time. It's absolutely fantastic, and I think it's important to remember that we really are our staff. Everything that we do is because of the great staff that we have, so all the ways that you're supporting our staff, to be the best they can be and to attract the best staff, is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Councillor Crone, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of things, the 4% turnover rate, that's phenomenal. I'd love to know why we're so low. That's, obviously, we're doing something great, so good on all of us. The second thing, you mentioned that you did some training with staff with CAMH. Could you tell us a little more about that?
Yes, we had actually the chief nurse come in to a town hall with the staff to talk about, it was essentially a Mental Health 101, to explain what the different terms are. She actually is, she's a head of nursing for CAMH, but she lives across the street in EG. So she herself came and did the presentation. Typically, that might be assigned to somebody else, and that was great news to have somebody, such an important figure, working and living so close to us. So she provided a lot of information about debunking some myths around mental health, what support looks like, what mental health illness looks like, and how people can access services.
That sounds exceptional, and I would just throw it out to you, maybe in the future, if such a bit of training comes available again. I can't speak for my colleagues, but I certainly would love to participate because, you know, we deal with members of the public who, at times, are not doing well, and we interact with a lot of people every day, and I think that would be a skill that I would love to develop, to help folks that are in that case. So anyway, thank you very much for your presentation.
I actually have a meeting with her next week to talk about a rollout of training. We want to do sort of a program of work, not just sort of an ad hoc training session from here, like here and there. We want to develop a program of work, so we have a meeting with her next week, and we can certainly incorporate training specifically for council.
Yeah, don't forget us people up here. We'd love to be involved. Thank you.
Yes, I'd love to be involved, too. And I'm sure when we go around the table here, time permitting for people's calendar, I think it would be really important that we had, maybe not the same as what staff would have, but certainly a reduced program that would give us some skills that we don't have.
Absolutely. Just if I may, one of the questions that I've had in the past is how are you getting all of this done? And so we are reaching out to third parties to get their assistance in some of that work. I would be remiss also if I didn't introduce to you Isabella Palota, who's in the audience, and she's here. We hired her on contract, and she has been a superstar, literally doing, conducting job interviews on Week One. And so with the assistance of help and support in that way, it takes load off of, it splits up the work a little bit more, and she's super skilled, comes from a position with our hospital partners, and so, and used to be a student here, so it's great to have her back. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'm not seeing any. Councillor Johns, would you move this? Thank you. All in favor? And that carries. We are at item I in our agenda, Community Infrastructure and Environmental Services, with councillor Leahy.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Mayor. Item number one on the agenda has, regarding the blue box transition update, has been removed today, but I would like to ask for a mover so that we can invite Director of Public Works, Mr. Megget, to address the removal of the report from the agenda. No? Okay.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Apologies, my mic wasn't working. You don't need a mover, as the item has been withdrawn.
Okay.
Councillor Leahy, however, if Director Megget would like to provide further information, he can do that.
Thank you very much. Director Megget, would you like to provide any comments?
Through, Madam Mayor. This is an important staff report that we felt needed a little more attention, so we'll be bringing it back to a future meeting shortly for the discussion. It is a very, a report that has a lot of moving pieces right now, so we're just trying to fill some gaps before we can bring it back for council's review.
Thank you very much. So we'll move right on to item number two. The report, CIES 2023 hyphen 17, Proposed Village Green Averton Working Hours. Could I have a mover, please? Could I have a mover, please? Thank you, councillor Crone. And the report is moved by councillor Crone. And Director Megget, would you have any comments on this report?
Only comment is staff note that we continue to work with Averton quite closely on this project and are doing everything we can to try and have it, have them be able to fulfill their build and complete this project, and did want to note that we have instructed the security guard on-site to only monitor after-hours activities and to remain off-site at all times.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from members of committee?
Thank you very much. I see no further questions. I would like to thank the staff for preparing the report, which recommends that the town grant permission to work indoors on Saturdays from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM in accordance with the bylaw, noise bylaw, on a temporary basis from June 20th to July 25th, and that staff prepare a follow-up report for council.
for council's meeting on July 25th, recommending either continuation or cessation of this expanded permission, subject to staff's assessment of compliance with stated objectives related to noise and dust mitigation. Any further questions? Seeing no further questions, all those in favor of the motion as presented.
Point of order, I'm wondering if we should separate out the two motions. One is to receive, and one is in more detail. I don't want the receipt to fail.
Through you, Madam Chair. So there's been a request to split the motion as it has been presented on the agenda. So there are three clauses to that motion. It has been moved by Counselor Crone, and the request is to split all three levels of that.
Counselor Roy DiClemente.
So we've already embarked on a, you've already, as chair, you've already called the vote. So you have two votes for, if the motion is going to fail, but you haven't asked for any votes against. If the motion fails, then I'd be happy to move receipt, if that makes any sense. Thank you. So, Madam Chair, you've asked for, you've presented the motion. You've asked for votes in favor. You've received two. And so the next step would be for you to ask if there are any opposed.
Right. Well...
Point of clarification, if it fails, you can't bring it right back for a second vote.
Madam Mayor, because I am a newer counselor in terms of the procedures with, procedures of committee, and there's no instruction manual to follow with regard to these items that are put forward. May I have the assistance of the town clerk? Maybe we go back one step and break it down into separate parts and then begin again with the vote?
Through you, Madam Mayor. As the vote has been called, however, you have not declared it. So it's still an outstanding motion. So perhaps if it is council, if it's committee's pleasure to do that, what you can do alternatively is to entertain the idea of splitting the motion, Counselor Leahy. So what I would suggest is, that was a recommendation by one of the colleagues around the dais, is to split that particular motion. So the first one would be the motion to receive the report. The second clause would be to permit the indoor works on Saturdays. And the third clause is for the staff to prepare a report to be brought back in July.
Yes, so we will do three separate votes. That is correct?
That's correct.
Very good. Well, then, if there are no further questions, then we'll separate it into three parts and vote separately on each of the three parts. So the first is, be it resolved that Joint Community Infrastructure and Environmental Services and Development Services Report, CIES 2023-17, dated June 20th, 2023, entitled Proposed Village Green Averton Working Hours, be received. All those in favor of the motion as presented? The motion is carried.
That's correct, Counselor Leahy. So that one was moved initially by Counselor Crone. So the second aspect of that motion will require a mover. Same with the third clause.
Very good. Okay. So the second part, could I have a mover for the second part of the, that Averton be permitted to work indoors on Saturdays from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in accordance with the noise bylaw on a temporary basis from June 20th to 2023 to July 25th, 2023? I need a mover for that? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are there any questions with regard to that before we vote? All those in favor of the motion as presented? All those opposed? The motion is defeated. Part three, that staff prepare a follow-up report for council's meeting. Well, is staff three necessary? Is part three necessary? If the, if part two was, yes. Yes, Counselor Roy DiClemente.
We could either not put it on the table, or we could ask that staff prepare a report for us July 25th with any recommendations. A deputant today mentioned that she had not had an opportunity to participate in the preparing of the report. I don't know if that's necessary. I'm not supporting it because I don't think they're at the point where they would be able to work indoors without disrupting the neighbors. There's, the buildings aren't finished yet. So I'm fine either way. I'm okay to have another staff report, but I'm not prepared to permit the indoor work on weekends.
So just to be clear, the part two that was just defeated, the motion that was just defeated, allowing work on Saturdays indoors, which was in accordance and in alignment with the staff report that was presented to council, and that staff recommended that we accept the change in the contract to allow for Saturday work. That is what the staff recommended after meeting with the deputant. Yes, through you?
Thank you. Council, sorry, Committee of the Whole and council requested that staff make that recommendation at our last meeting.
So for clarification, you've just voted against what the staff recommended council do and Committee of the Whole do?
I am being consistent in my position, Madam Chair, because I also did not support getting this report in the first place. I voted against it in the first place. So I'm just being consistent in my messaging.
Counselor Crone.
Thank you. Staff are putting this recommendation before us because it's what we asked for. It's not necessary that this is what staff are endorsing. So I think it's up to us to decide what we want to do with this. And this is not a recommendation from staff. This is staff saying, here's what you could possibly do. It's, the decision is ours, not staff's.
Thank you. Clerk, town clerk, would you advise us to the best way to proceed with part three of this original?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the initial request was to split the motions. So at this point, council would have to either entertain this motion. If you do not have a mover for the motion, the motion will lapse. However, I believe there was a proposal to revisit that aspect of the motion. I'm not sure if it's going to substantially change the intent of the motion. So it is really through council's consensus, if you wish to go ahead and call for a mover on that item, and we can proceed with that matter.
Okay, I will call for a mover on part three. Do I have a mover? There is no mover. Yes, and so in terms of procedure, how do we proceed?
Through you, Madam Chair. That, in the absence of a mover for this particular item, that item is lapsed. So you would have to move on to the next item on your agenda.
Item number three, oh, yes, CAO Veltic.
Madam Chair, through you. Just for some clarification, the second, third, but second on the report I'm looking at, resolution to report back relates to expanded permission. By defeating expanded permission, it's illogical to consider that. If it was a new resolution or recommendation that said, "Report back on something different or based on some new information," or what have you, that would be fine. But it's somewhat illogical to consider expanded permission and report back on it when, in fact, that's already been defeated. So I believe, I believe that moving on to the next item probably makes sense at this point.
Item number three. Report CIES 2023-18, York Region's Municipal Streetscape Partnership Program Application for the Young Street Revitalization Project. Do I have a mover? Counselor Carruthers, thank you. Director Megget, do you have any comments on this report?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. This report builds on staff report CIES 23-15, dated June 6th, that regards the Young Street Revitalization Project. This is a proposal in response to a circular request to acknowledge two things, that the town's committing 50% capital contribution towards streetscape enhancement features, as well as a commitment for ongoing maintenance in perpetuity. This represents an approximate shared cost of about $100, sorry, $1.9 million for streetscape enhancement with the region of York. And it's more administrative in nature than anything. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of committee? Counselor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Just wanted to clarify, there's a clause here that says, "In the event of a successful application, that the staff will enter into a maintenance agreement with York Region, committing us to maintain the streetscape and active transportation improvements at our cost." But it is a regional road. So I'm just wondering if we can clarify what aspects that we would be committing to maintain? Because it's a bit open-ended from my perspective. So if you can clarify, maybe there's a, maybe the streetscape word is a more technical word that I'm not aware of. Please, and thank you.
Through, Madam Mayor. Yeah, very good point. We, as typical on most regional roadways, we look after everything on the boulevard. So that would include street lighting, sidewalks, multi-use paths, street furniture, and this encompasses all those elements. The one noted change is that the region will continue to be responsible for any trees along municipal street trees along the road, and that will continue to be looked after through the region.
Counselor Roy DiClemente.
And so that would be clarified and laid out in the maintenance agreement that we would, that we would have with the region?
Through, Madam Mayor, that is correct. And right now, we anticipate that cost is going to be between $20,000 to $40,000 a year.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from members of committee? Seeing no further questions, I'll call a vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented? And the motion is carried. And that is the end of the CIES. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We are under Community Parks Recreation and Culture with Counselor Crone in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items on the agenda today. The first item is Community Parks and Recreation and Culture Memo, Health and Active Living Plaza Update, which I'm sure we're all eager to hear. Could I have a mover for this? Moved by Counselor Foster. Mr. Karmazin, we eagerly await your news.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope I live up to expectations. We've prepared for council and the public our quarterly update for the construction of the Health and Active Living Plaza. Very pleased to report continued positive momentum with the construction on site, with the warmer seasonal weather. The project continues to track on schedule for completion in early 2025, 2025. And the project is well within the council-approved project budget. Over the next quarter, council and the public will see structural steel delivered to the site and the assembly of the structure in the next, in the next three months. Be happy to answer any questions that council may have related to the memo.
Thank you, Mr. Karmazin. Are there any questions? Counselor Jones?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Crone. Through you to Mr. Karmazin. I just, in follow-up from residents' concerns about property standards that were surrounding the site. I know that we've came at a no-mo May and coming into making sure that in June we are looking as pristine as we can. I just wanted to ensure that there was the follow-up on that north side of the sidewalk that the developer, the builder for our site was helping to maintain for us, to make sure that we were shining and demonstrating our leadership in high-quality property standards.
Mr. Karmazin?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I can confirm that the boulevard grass has been cut along Jimmorton, and we continue to follow up with the developer and their contracted services to maintain the boulevard grass where there aren't occupancies in the community.
Great, thank you. It means a lot for the community there to see that. So thank you for staying on top of it.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Karmazin? Seeing none, I will call a vote to accept the report. All in favor? All right, motion is carried. The second item on our list is Community Parks and Recreation and Culture Memo, Seniors Community Grant. Mr. Karmazin, share with us this news.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This item is to inform council that the town has received a grant to support seniors' programming in town. I'd like to thank Rhonda Wilson, our manager of Recreation Events and Community Engagement and staff for securing this grant to further expand and enhance our senior programs within town.
Thank you. Could I have a mover for this? Moved by Counselor Roy DiClemente. Are there any questions for Mr. Karmazin around this? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor? Not opposed, motion is carried. Do we have any questions from committee to Mr. Karmazin? Mr. Karmazin, do you have any other items you'd like to share with committee?
Through you, Mr. Chair. One further update for council. Pleased to announce that our camp programs have, are registering, and we've just exceeded record levels for participation with our, with our summer camp programs. So pleased to provide that update to council that we have bounced back as far as some of the shutdowns and some of the items that we were experiencing through the pandemic, and are seeing unprecedented numbers as far as our registered programs and camps.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you very much. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're under Development Services with Counselor Roy DiClemente in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have, I believe it's five items on our agenda this afternoon. The first one is a planning branch report regarding a site plan application from 280738 Ontario Bank at 55 Page Wood Court. Ms. Beijing, do you want to go ahead and present this one to us, please?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Just like to note that, as council is aware, the legislation has changed such that site plan approval is now delegated to staff. However, this application came in prior to that new legislation. And you will continue to see throughout this year and possibly into the next, site plan applications come forward for your approval, just based on the time, often as a result of business decisions made by the applicant in terms of the timing when they come forward. So just wanted to note that. Also noting that this is the first site plan application for that industrial development on the, on the east side of Woodbine Road. And you'll note that there was a minor variance for parking, but staff are satisfied that based on the operations of the business and the fact that it does not have a retail focus, per se, that it is appropriate. So happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Members of committee, Counselor Johns.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, everybody probably gets tired of me here, hearing me echo commercial, industrial, building our tax base. But when we're seeing it on the, on the agenda like this, I just want to call out that this is, this is exactly what we need to be doing to build our tax base and bring employment to the town. And I'm just, I'm very excited to see that development moving forward. So thank you, Madam Chair.
So with that, would you like to move it, Counselor Johns?
It would be my pleasure.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, and the motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is a planning report regarding a request to remove a property from the town's Heritage Registry of Cultural Heritage Properties at 54 Mount Albert Road in Holland Landing. May I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Carruthers. Ms. Beijing, did you want to present your, go ahead and present your report, please?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. The request was to have this removed from the list. And the Heritage Advisory Committee, upon review, is ultimately in support of the request. However, they've asked that a heritage cultural assessment be conducted. And that's really more to understand the contextual value. For this property, it wasn't specifically the building or the architectural elements that were, that were of concern. of concern, but the location and how it may have featured in, in the town's history is an important aspect to, to understand. So having that assessment will further inform steps that the municipality may wish to take in terms of noting or emphasizing that location and its function. You'll also note, through you, Madam Chair, that I, we have added a reference anticipating concerns about seeing properties coming forward for removal. That we've noted that, that the need to have a more comprehensive heritage strategy for the municipality as a whole, to be able to be more proactive as opposed to reactive in, in how we are addressing our heritage assets.
Mayor Haxson.
Thank you. I'm just wondering about the strategy and when we should anticipate it coming back to us.
Through you, Madam Chair. If it's council's pleasure, we could come back with a sort of outlined scope for the project and a potential budget. We anticipate that it would, at a high level, be able to provide an opportunity for council to have some discussion around what the priorities are with regard to maintaining and potentially investing in heritage assets. It would potentially include efforts to further refine existing heritage lists, so engaging expertise there, and, and understanding the, the implications of the current legislation that, that has sort of put a timeline on, in effect, designate or lose our heritage assets. So we're happy to come back with a scoped project and a budget for your review approval at a future meeting.
Any, any timing in mind at this point?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just given the current schedule, I, we would anticipate coming back to post-August break. If there is a sense of urgency, we can certainly work to bring it back in, in advance of that.
Good. Thank you very much.
Counselor Carruthers. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. I have a couple of concerns about the conditions. I worry that we are asking a property owner to go to the expense of a heritage evaluation because we want it, not because it's something that the resident wants or that the resident feels is necessary. But this is something that, that, this is an expense that we are putting on a resident, and I have a lot of problems with that. If we want to do heritage evaluation, I think it should be at the town's expense. If the condition is that they submit to a heritage evaluation, you know, that they coordinate or cooperate with heritage evaluation, I think that's fair. But I don't know why we would settle them with the cost of that. I think that's very unfair. And the second one, that the property owner work with the Heritage Advisory Committee, that is an advisory committee to provide advice to council. I would rather have the property owner work with staff. And if there is advice to come to council, it can come through the Heritage Advisory Committee. But I don't think that we should have residents working directly with our advisory committees. I think it sets a precedent for our other committees with work being done. So I'm wondering if there, if there's some rationale behind that, or if those are things that are up for, for some modification.
Ms. Beijing?
Through you, Madam Chair. I, that sort of speaks to the, the requirement to have a more comprehensive discussion around heritage. Current policy dictates that the expense is borne by the, the resident, and, and that does present challenges in terms of the, you know, the financial burden on residents. So it's a private individual paying for what is essentially a public good. But that is the current policy. So, and that's, and this is consistent with other removal requests. The point about the role of the advisory committee, again, sort of speaks, speaks to the need to have a strategy that defines what resources and staffing may or may not be available. Currently, they are sort of the designated body with expertise to provide comment on heritage assets and their disposition. We have not empowered staff to, to make those judgments at this time. So I certainly recognize that there is lots of room for improvement and streamlining the process and potentially looking at a process that is perceived to be more equitable from the resident's perspective. And that's part and parcel of the need to have a more comprehensive strategy and have those discussions.
Thank you. So through you, Madam Chair, would, would it be out of line to add a third piece to that, saying that the town will reimburse the resident for the cost of the heritage evaluation?
Through you, Madam Chair. I would note that, that, because that has been the consistent practice, that could establish a precedent for other people that have submitted similar requests and have had to pay for the assessment.
And when was the last time that that happened?
I believe with one of the, I can check, I'll go back and check. But it was recent, very recent, like in recent months.
Okay. Okay. So it sounds to me, it, it's standard practice, and it's not unusual in East Wil, it's not just a, a practice that's unique to East Wil and Barry. This is a consistent practice across municipalities who have cultural heritage registries, and this is how other municipalities handle the matter, correct?
That's correct. And I can perhaps ask our manager of planning to speak, speak to it, because she's the liaison with the Heritage Advisory Committee. So maybe speak to the, the process and how the, when, and when the Heritage Advisory Committee feels that it's appropriate to ask for that assessment.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
Through you, Madam Mayor. So typically, in the process, we request the cultural heritage evaluation in advance of the property being removed. In this case specifically, the property owner was concerned to put up that expense without some assurance that the property would be removed. So that was sort of the Heritage Committee's compromise with them, was that if council gives you the assurance that it will be removed from the registry, then you can complete the evaluation to document the history after the fact.
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for that response. And could we have this question divided, please?
Okay, noted. Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think that any of the information that's been brought up so far is unfair, although I think if we're going to be, be spending money to do heritage evaluations on, on property that we don't own, I believe that's all part of the report that's going to come later on. So I think we're getting the cart before the horse a little bit here. The other thing that I'm concerned about here, and Ms. Beijing, I did speak to you about this the other day, and a couple of my colleagues. And again, Ms. Moore just said, you know, about the, the owner having some assurances on how things were going to work. And again, that the Heritage Advisory Committee had no issue with this. But what about if that cultural heritage evaluation comes up with some information that we do not know yet, and that information becomes somewhat important? I, I'm not so sure that I, that I like the recommendation the way it's written. I, I almost think there should be something there that says, "We, we reserve the right as the town to go back and have a look, depending on the information that comes up." And, you know, it, it's a, it's a silly thing that I said to you, but what about if information comes up that, you know, one of our first prime ministers wrote a speech about Confederation in that house? We, we have no idea. And, and a lot of that information may not come up. We don't have a lot of information on this house, so I don't expect a lot of information to come. But there's always that possibility. The way this looks is, no matter what that report says, we're going to go ahead with the removal. I don't know what my colleagues think about that, but I thought it was worth mentioning.
Counselor Cronin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, yeah, I, I have to agree with Mr. Counselor Foster that we're, we're, we're saying two different things here, where if we're going to allow them to take it off the list, but we still want a, a report, I think we've got it reversed. If, if we want them to do the report, I think we wait, wait for that, and, and then make the decision about the house. Or if we're going to decide to de-list the house, then why, why go through the trouble of the report? I, I think we, we're trying to have it both ways here. That's my first comment. The second comment is, I, and I've said it before in these, every time this, this comes up here, and, and I know you're working on a strategy, but, you know, if we had a heritage reserve fund that, that we, people could access to, to, you know, get these reports that are needed, then we're not, because it's for us, you know, for the public good, you know, they could draw upon that fund. Or, you know, whether it's a cost sharing or whatever, but it's, it's something that could be done in the future. Those are just my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Ms. Beijing, did you care to respond?
Yeah, I think it's important to clarify that, and this is, can, an aspect of the heritage list that can be confusing. Sometimes it is recognizing the property and the location, and sometimes it's, it's recognizing the building. It's my understanding, and Ms. Moore can correct me if I, if I'm wrong, that the, the Heritage Advisory Committee has done an assessment of the structure and has not deemed it to be significant. It's more about understanding that location, given its elevation and its proximity to the river and, and to some of the early industry, and understanding what, what that meant in terms of the town's development. And it is complex, because removing it ostensibly allows the, the homeowner to make changes or to, you know, to rebuild. And whereas the, but I think the advantage or the benefit to the town is that we would still understand what that location was significant, or what made that location significant, and just have that sort of assurance. So it's, it's less in this instance about preserving a structure, per se. It's more about understanding the context.
Counselor Jones.
I, I think Ms., thank you, Madam Chair. I think Ms. Moore's comments were interesting to me about, in kind of follow-up, that the, the resident was of understanding that it, they would be responsible for that, should it be removed. So there's already that base understanding. I very much understand where Counselor Carruthers is coming from on this as too. And so to, we don't have this, this, this heritage plan in front of us yet. So I feel like we're trying to move through things as best we can. I'm, to, to move it forward so we can make decision-making, I'm happy to move, move the motion so we can get this called. And then Counselor Carruthers, you did say you want it broken up. I don't know if you still do base. Okay, then I will leave it to the Madam Chair. But if you wish for a mover, I am here at your service.
Thank you. I will note as well, I, I believe this property is currently on the market. And so it's, it's not even that, that the current owner wants to remodel, that it's, it's potentially a future owner who may want to remodel. It's, it's not clear at this point what the, what the long-term implications for this property are. So Counselor Carruthers, you have your hand up.
Thank you. So if we're not concerned about the cultural heritage of the building, we're only concerned with the cultural heritage of the land, can we remove the building and not the land? And, and skip over this whole assessment? Because I'm also thinking, it's a small, it's a relatively small lot, that whatever the significance of that land is, it's also significant to the neighbors on either side. So it becomes that whole area, which shouldn't, that expense shouldn't be borne by an individual property owner. It should be borne by the town wanting to find out more about our heritage. And so to me, this sounds different than when we've had individual houses. This is about the land and the significance to the town's history of the land. So I, I do think this is different. And the reason I want it separated, I would love to separate it even more, but I, I can't obviously. I, I do want to receive the report, and I do think it should be removed from, from the, the heritage list, but I don't agree with the conditions. And my question would be, how much of a hurry are they, if we let them know that we'll be rethinking our policy in the fall, and they might not have to incur this expense in the fall? Is that something that we should be communicating to them? Because I certainly would feel bad if I went to the expense and then found out that the, a month later, that, that the policy changed. And then a second question would be, how much are we talking about for one of these reports?
Ms. Beijing?
Through you, Madam Chair. I will defer to Ms. Moore to get into the detail of the, of the cost of the evaluation. But they, at a high level, it is, is absolutely possible to remove a structure but keep the property on the list. In fact, we had a situation where that was contemplated recently in Mount Albert, so.
Ms. Moore, go ahead, please.
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe this applicant, when we had spoken with them, advised that the, the quote for the heritage evaluation was upwards of six thousand dollars. I think it was somewhere between six and eight. And the other challenge that they had is the prices were high because, given Bill 23, it's really hard to find heritage consultants right now. So I think that the prices have gone up in recent months.
Go ahead, Ms. Beijing.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. If I may, and I, and this has sort of been one of the reasons we've wanted to initiate some strategy work, is that we, this is a great example of what we perceive to be a public good or a public benefit in terms, in terms of investing our heritage. But we have no mechanism right now in terms of either staff capacity or the ability to, to fund some of these, this work to be able to better understand and/or preserve our heritage. So there's no question that there is significant room for improvement, and that is sort of the, the thrust of trying to have these conversations and develop a more comprehensive strategy.
Counselor Carruthers.
So if, again, if we're saying that it's, it's fine to take down the building, it's only the land that we're interested in, why do we need the evaluation now? Why would we not just wait and do the evaluation at a future date when we have our policy in place? It, it doesn't seem like we're going to miss out on anything. The building comes down, and, and the land is still always going to be there.
Through you, Madam Chair. The, typically, the rationale for listing a property would be to ensure that any future development conforms to the heritage look and feel. So that would be the risk you would run, is that, you know, should, should the property change hands? Should the existing building be demolished? We wouldn't necessarily have an ability to influence, you know, the design or the, you know, the, the way it conforms to sort of the heritage, heritage of the, of the area. But...
I'm sorry, I think you misunderstood my question. If we, if the land is still heritage and, and we remove the house, we still have the designation on the land, and we can do the evaluation at any point in time. As long as the land is designated, everything you said would still... And, and I also, I didn't get a, an answer to my question about the timing. Have they been advised that we will be, be looking at this in the fall, and that there could be changes to the policy?
To your first point, thank you for the clarification. And, and yes, I, I believe that makes sense. And to the second point, no, because we hadn't, we haven't come for, to council for, to initiate the project or approve a budget yet, so.
I think that should be made clear to them. I don't know if we need that in the motion, to make sure that they understand that.
So in the interest of trying to move this forward and maybe build a bit of consensus, there's a couple of things that I think need to, to move, that we need to take care of. I think we need a separate motion, once we've dealt with this property. I think we need a separate motion requesting that Ms. Beijing and her staff prepare a report for a comprehensive heritage strategy that outlines some of these questions and helps us build some, give some direct, clear direction to both our advisory committee and to our staff and to our residents about what our commitment is to heritage and what that looks like as far as a funding strategy. So we'll, we'll deal with that once we've handled this particular matter. I'm reading the staff report, and I'm seeing that the Heritage Advisory Committee was suggesting that there may be some architectural value in the property. They're citing Gothic Revival architectural style, as well as the contextual value of the settlement pattern. So in the interest of perhaps finding a, a compromise on this, Counselor Foster, I'm also mindful of, of your comments that suggest that, you know, we need to have the ability to, to make up a mind once that report is done. What if we were to offer to go half on the, to contribute half of the cost of the heritage assessment, and then ask for a report back once that, that's complete, and then decide whether or not we're going to remove it? What do you think? It kind of, it doesn't saddle the owner with the full expense of the report. It gets our, it gets a little bit more study of the proper structure and... It gets our, it gets a little bit more study of the proper structure, and what's happening there, as far as the heritage value of the structure, as well as the lands. It gets us what we need, it gets the resident a little bit more information about the property, and then the staff can report back to us, and once that assessment is complete, and then we can say whether we're going to be okay to remove it or not. So that's another way of approaching this. I'm just trying to find some consensus here, having listened to everybody.
Through you, Madam Chair. Council, our members of committee may also wish to consider that if the determination is to retain the property on the heritage list, that at that point, we could reimburse the cost of the study, because it isn't obviously achieving the objective that the resident is desiring. That may be a simpler way to address it.
Members of committee, what's your pleasure? At this point, I have a motion to receive the report, moved by Counselor Carruthers. So, other than that, I don't have anything else. So maybe we'll deal with that one. So, we've got a motion from Counselor Carruthers, that we receive the report. All those in favor. And that motion is carried. Would anyone like to move that we approve the request to remove the property, subject to the conditions as presented here on our agenda, that the owner conduct and submit an evaluation, and, prior to submitting a demolition permit, and that the property owner work with the Heritage Advisory Committee when designing a new home, to ensure the design is compatible with the heritage context. Would someone like to move that? Okay. No one would like to move that. Would someone like to move an alternative motion? Counselor Carruthers.
I would like to move that the property be removed from the heritage list.
With no further conditions?
Nope.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Carruthers.
I'm open to friendly amendments. I just want to get it out there, and then we can build on it.
Yep.
So don't defeat it right away. Let's get something.
That's where I'm, I'm in the chair, I'm having to take, I'm directing the traffic here. So at this moment, we have a motion that we would remove it from the heritage registry. Any discussion, or any proposed amendments to that motion? Counselor Johns.
I'll support it as is. I think we're just in this murky area, where we don't have the plan, and like, I don't like the idea of saddling the owner, even if there was a compromise, oh, we split it, and we pay, like, I'm going to support Counselor Carruthers in the motion the way it's read right now.
Okay. Any further discussion? So we have a motion from Counselor Carruthers, that we remove 54 Mount Albert Road from the Registry of Cultural Heritage Properties. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion is defeated. Okay. So, would someone like to make a motion? We owe this property owner some direction.
Yep.
Again, acting on the advice of the Heritage Advisory Committee, I believe we're fine with this coming off the list. However, I go back to my first thought process. If we can build something in here that says we have the opportunity to have a sober second thought, then I would, I would support that. So I don't know how you'd like to write that up, if you want to give that a whirl. But again, if information comes back that we have no idea about, and we've already removed it and torn it down, I think we look a little stupid. I think we, I don't think we need to fall into a precedent of removing properties from our heritage list, without the proper heritage evaluations, so that we know exactly what we're doing. If we change that with our, with our further work, then we'll deal with it then. But for now, I think this is a little dangerous.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, that we, that we remove it after the heritage evaluation, unless there are extenuating circumstances that make us rethink.
Counselor Johns.
So can I, through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Moore. So is it, is it the owner's understanding, and they've already agreed, that they will pay for this evaluation if it's removed, and their understanding of a four to $6,000 cost? That's what it would cost?
Six to eight.
Six to eight, sorry.
Through you, Madam Chair. That message has been conveyed to the owner, and they wish to proceed.
Madam Clerk, you have the intent of Counselor Foster's motion?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So, it's very similar to the original motion, that was just defeated, in terms of the removal of the property. Perhaps committee would want to reconsider that defeated motion, because it's almost the same, save, except for the conditions that you just noted. So perhaps, we need a motion to reconsider the previous one, which is to just deal with the request to approve the removal, since that has been already discussed and defeated.
But I believe the intent of Counselor Foster's motion is that there is an opportunity to keep it on the list, if the, if the review uncovers some fantastic piece of information. I want to make sure I'm clear on that.
We have no idea what that evaluation is going to tell us. My thought process is, that house was built, I believe, probably prior to 1850, but the house is not in great shape, but don't tell me that it cannot be fixed. If you throw enough money at anything, you can fix it. It's in the original plot of where Hall and Landing was, it originated right there. It's right across the road from Peter Robinson's mill, which is stacked in history like you wouldn't believe. I believe there's a possibility that there could be something come out of this heritage evaluation that we absolutely do not expect. Would I be surprised if there is not? No, I wouldn't. But I would, I just, I'm, I don't know that I'm ready to say, drop it, let's move on, until we know.
Counselor Carruthers.
So procedurally, someone who voted no would have to put forward the motion to reconsider. And I'm happy to do that, because when I put forward that motion, I was looking for what conditions my colleagues wanted with it. But I'm hearing from Counselor Foster, he's only looking at doing the heritage evaluation, that that, and correct me if I'm wrong or not, if I'm correct, that we're looking, that what you would like to see is the heritage evaluation done, and once we get that, then make the decision about whether it's coming off the list. Is that correct? Is that what you're asking for?
Sure, let's go with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, Ms. Bishin has said that the property owner doesn't want to pay for the heritage evaluation, unless they're guaranteed it's going to come off the list. So therefore, we're on the hook for the cost of the evaluation, which I am fine with. I would be in support of us, even though it's maybe difficult with previous applications, but to Counselor Johns' point, we're kind of in a bit of a gray area where we're reconsidering. So I am happy to support Counselor Foster, if he wants to have the heritage evaluation done, but I would like to add that it's at the town's expense, not the property owner's.
Okay. So it sounds to me like we have, first of all, we've received the report, and that council would like to request that the property owner submit to a heritage evaluation at the town's expense. And following that heritage advisor, that heritage, that heritage evaluation, that staff report back to us with recommendations on whether or not to remove it from the list. Counselor Foster?
Okay, let me muddy the waters even more.
[laughter]
I'm not in favor of the town paying for heritage evaluations on properties that we do not own. What I'm saying is, if something comes out of this heritage evaluation that makes us think, boy, we shouldn't have torn that place down so quickly, I think we need the opportunity to have that second look. I don't know that I'm in favor of spending taxpayers' money on heritage evaluations on private property, until we have a look at the report that comes from Ms. Bishin's office. And I'm sure that the Heritage Advisory Committee will have some thought process to go into that. I worry about a precedent that we're going to set, if we're going to start paying for heritage evaluations. I think that one could be a long road.
Ms. Bishin, when this process, the property owner is trying to have it removed from the list, but the other angle of this process is, the property owner could make an application for a demolition permit, and that would have to come to council. Am I correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, that's correct, because it is listed property, so.
So, Counselor Foster, it sounds to me like you might be asking for a heritage evaluation be done on the property. Period.
Which the owner said built it?
Without, if it was removed. But we can't remove it if we can't, like, we can't, I know what you're trying to get to, Counselor Foster, but we can't do it, we can't remove it, and then put it back on, once the assessment's done.
So again, if the report doesn't come up with anything that would indicate that we need to have a sober second thought of it, then it gets removed. I don't understand how this is so difficult.
Okay. Counselor Carruthers.
I think where the difficulty is, is it's not our house. It's not our money to be, you know, like you said, you throw enough money at it, you can save it. But we're not throwing the money at it, right? This is, we're asking a resident to do this. So.
I'm not contesting anybody throwing money at it to save it.
But if we don't take it off, the only way to fix it up would be to throw a lot of money at it, is what I'm getting at. So the only, the resident doesn't want to do the heritage study. It's us that wants the heritage study. So if we want a heritage study, then we should pay for it. And the whole, when I've asked questions about, you know, what, why do we want to preserve things, what's the importance of heritage, it's about the public good. And that is town money, that's not private money. So if we want a heritage report, and we want the public good, and we want the information about our town, then we need to pony up for it. But to put that cost onto another resident, to me, that's unfair. And I, to your question about, will this open up the floodgates, and all these other ones coming through, well, we're looking at our policy in the fall, and that's when that will be addressed. And I don't think we're going to have a flood of them at our one meeting in July.
Madam Clerk, where are we at?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'm back at the origin.
Madam Chair.
Through you, Madam Chair.
I don't want that one. I don't want that chain.
So, I have kept, sorry, there it is. It's on the screen. So, Counselor Foster, what I have gathered so far is that you would like the property owner to conduct the cultural heritage evaluation, and for staff to report back.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was a motion that was introduced, however, so there's been no vote on that.
All right. So it moved by Counselor Foster. All those in favor? Opposed? And that motion is carried. We did it.
Yay.
Yay. Not quite as long as the two and a half hour discussion we had on 19040, Leslie, just so you guys know. That was a tough one. Thank you, everybody. Okay, item number three on our agenda is a site plan application from York Region Forest, then the parking lot at 4762 Queensville Side Road, SPA 23-03. It's just a receipt, just as an advisement, I think, from staff. Ms. Bishin, do you have anything further to add?
No, that's correct, through you, Madam Chair. And this is sort of the other style of advisement that council will continue to see for the site plans that were received following the new legislation, where the authority's been delegated to staff, but we wanted to have a mechanism to make council aware that these were happening.
Thank you. May I have a motion to receive, moved by Counselor Carruthers. Is there any discussion on this? Any feedback for staff? No? All right. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is Development Services Memorandum Regarding White Belt Landowner Group Secondary Planning, and our motion is that we receive this memorandum. May I have a mover? Moved by Mayor Haxton? Ms. Bishin, would you like to prepare this one, present this one to us? It sounds like we're moving quickly.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, yes. It's, the intent of this memorandum was really to sort of introduce this subject. We have been working with this landowners group for a couple of years now, and the intent, from their perspective, was to sort of follow along with, as we complete the official plan, we're right now working with the region to go through a conformity exercise with their, the regional official plan conformed to the provincial plan, and that sort of then required some modifications to our plan. So, in, I guess, a quote-unquote "normal" scenario, you would complete that, and then begin the secondary planning process. However, in light of recent announcements around the York Durham Sewerage Solution, and the timelines that are being imposed by the province to be able to secure financing, to put that infrastructure in place, it has required the landowners to have a much more robust planning framework in place, much sooner than originally anticipated. The plus side of this is that it will work in tandem with the official plan, and it is still very much a planning exercise, so it gives an opportunity to make sure that the objectives of the official plan, and of the municipal strategic plan, are incorporated in how those, in how that area of the community is built out. But it also gives a level of assurance to lending agencies, when the developers who are, in fact, front-ending the infrastructure costs, when they go to seek financing. So, that has resulted in having a very compressed timeline, but we've engaged with, obviously extensively with the landowner group, and with the consultants that assisted us on the official plan, and with others that will be able to assist us with the secondary planning process. And we are confident that we can move forward, recognizing that the, that as we, if we, you know, as legislation changes, it may impact both the official plan, and the secondary planning process, as we go through it. So I'm happy to entertain any questions that members of committee may have.
Counselor Johns, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So, again, being rookie here, in my mantra of, like, commercial-industrial, like, we need to keep pushing in employment lands, and so, in my opinion, the, who is the White Belt Landowner Group? Like, who is that made of? Is it residential, or is it commercial-industrial, of which I am very focused on championing?
Ms. Bishin? So the, the who is, there are multiple landowners, through you, Madam Chair. The mapping on the last, on page three of the report shows where these are, and it is, in fact, the secondary planning process that will help designate where employment goes, and where residential development goes. The intent, you know, along major corridors, the 404 and the anticipated Bradford bypass, would be where you would expect to see employment lands. And I should also note that we anticipate the mapping to change slightly, because there is a portion of these lands that was originally anticipated for inclusion in the 404 employment lands. So concurrent to this process, we're also working to potentially amend the 404 employment land secondary plan, to include another parcel that would have, that would be for employment use, and would have a separate agreement that's to support infrastructure development. So, many moving pieces, but, but the employment is definitely, employment is definitely a big piece of this. At the end of the day, this is a necessary piece of work to allow us to have the pipe in the ground.
Counselor Carruthers.
Thank you. Further to Counselor Johns' question, I think that who's in the White Belt Landowners Group will somewhat dictate how the secondary plans are being done. If it's all residential developers, then they're going to be pushing for residential, right? So I think that was a very good question from Counselor Johns. And my question is, who is leading this? Is this us leading this process, or is this the developers who are leading this?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the, the terms of reference for the various studies were developed collaboratively with staff and the landowners group. It is, the secondary plan is the municipality's secondary plan, but this, we have an agreement from the development, or from the White Belt Landowners Group, that they will fund the secondary plan. So it is, it will, it's not coming out of our budget to complete the secondary plan. I think it's, we've, we've seen, it's sort of more at the level of the tertiary or the community design plan, where you'll see the detail. or the community design plan where you'll see the detail around exactly what the various areas of the community look like, but we anticipate that what was anticipated in the official plan to be blue or employment lands will be reflected in the secondary plan. So, that, that, that level of analysis has already been conducted, and there's no reason to expect that it would be, the secondary plan would be inconsistent with that.
Through you, Madam Chair, just to follow up. Yeah, just a moment. Ms. Bejane, what I think might be helpful is if we were to take Appendix One, that map, and overlay it with the schedule from the official plan, so that members of committee can see what's blue, what's white, what's pink, what's, what's supposed to be everything, then we'll have a better understanding of what will be, what the deliverables will be for those secondary plans. Go ahead, Counselor Cruthers.
So, just following up on that, I, I don't think it's the blue employment lands that I'm as concerned about as I am about not having another Minto, where, where you can't walk to anything, there's not a corner store, there's not a doctor's office, there's nothing there. So, having something like the gentleman who was before us today that's showing a nice mix of commercial and residential, and I don't think that some of these landowners want that. I mean, we just saw that, I think it was, was it DG that was here, and we asked, you know, where would people walk to get a, pick up a carton of milk? And it's, yeah, through the woods and a kilometer and a half that way, which isn't going to happen, right? So, we don't want those kind of communities. And, and I just, I look back at our last wave of development, and I don't want to make the same mistakes that we made there. We, we saw the developers front-ended the pipe, and so then we were beholden to them to give, to let them develop their land, and we ended up with these stranded communities. And I don't want to see that happen again. And so, I'm a little bit worried with developers paying for the process, if the developers are all very residential-focused about getting a secondary plan that isn't what council's looking for.
Go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. The, to your point about the earlier, the way that the community was built out, it absolutely was a reflection of front-ending the infrastructure, but in the absence of the ability to pay for the infrastructure that we need, it's not going to come through the region, for example. I think that it's, the development is going to be less sort of linear in terms of like a progression from, from south to north, but it does allow for contiguous development sort of infill, if you think of like a hub-and-spoke type of model. We don't, we haven't had discussions at the, at the detail of the, sort of, the tertiary community design plan with all of the groups yet, but we are in discussion with, with one in particular that is produced, that is proposing a very innovative, state-of-the-art technology, sustainability focus, and looking at sort of complementing the existing topography, and certainly includes mixed use, and there's an employment component. And they're very, they're very motivated to sort of be the leader and, and sort of setting the tone for the type of development we see going forward. And, and we've had many conversations about the strategic plan and the objectives that council has around community building, and they have committed very strongly that they see that being embedded in the secondary planning process as an essential component. So, recognizing where we didn't have perhaps an opportunity when the last major piece of infrastructure went in, to talk about walkability and mixed use and those types of things, we certainly do now.
Thank you, I appreciate that response, and I have a lot more confidence after hearing that, that you will lead us and keep the pressure on them and not let them control the process, and to remember all the things that council spoke about, about walkability and our connected natural heritage and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Ms. Bejane, as well, I, I feel like, I feel obligated to reiterate, it needs to conform with the official plan that council has adopted. It needs to reflect the principles of the strategic plan, and if we don't like what comes to us, we don't have to adopt it, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, that's absolutely correct. So, you know, they, we went, we, as a municipality, went through a very rigorous official plan process, and that absolutely sets the tone for the secondary and tertiary planning that will follow.
And we will all have input into these plans?
Absolutely. I, I will be coming forward in the near future with, with a report, sort of requesting council's approval of the proposed approach and the, and the draft terms of reference. The terms of reference will outline the various studies that need to be undertaken for the development, and, and, but then, once those studies come back, we absolutely have the opportunity to review them and, and assess their completeness and whether or not more information is required. So, we have an ability to provide input and approvals at every step of the process.
Thank you. Members of committee, anything further on this matter? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by Mayor Haxson that we receive the memorandum, all those in favor? And that motion is carried. The last item on our agenda is Sunday gun hunting. We have a memorandum that is for being received. May I have a motion, please? Maybe I have a mover, moved by Counselor Crone? Any discussion? Ms. Bejane, do you have anything further to add?
Through you, Madam Chair, nothing further to add. This was in response to direction that staff received, so I'm happy to entertain any questions or further comment that council may have.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor from Counselor Crone, all those in favor? And that motion is carried. Before I close off, I'm going to come back, because I think we wanted a little bit of distance from the heritage matters. Mayor Haxson had raised the, the question about a heritage strategy, and I, I think you were looking to, you, I was going to bring you back to that and see if you still wanted to make that motion requesting a strategy with some models and a resource plan and funding.
All of the above, yes. No, I think, I think it's really important, moving forward, that we need that as part of it.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, we have a motion moved by Mayor Haxson directing staff to bring a report to us in early fall? Timing-wise, would that work?
Sorry, I'm-
That's okay. I was saying early fall for a report, or do you want to just say this fall and leave it at that? So, fall 2023?
Certainly, through you, Madam Chair, that's appropriate.
So, reporting fall 2023 regarding a comprehensive heritage strategy with models to consider, a resource plan, and a funding, and options for funding. Is that fair?
Yes, thank you.
We've heard the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Okay, so that's the end of the prepared agenda. Ms. Bejane, do you have anything further to raise?
Not at this time, thank you, Madam Chair.
I think we've raised enough trouble, I think we've, I think we've made enough trouble today. Members of committee, anything to raise under this area?
I'll turn the chair back to you. I'll turn the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, and we'll move into finance with Counselor Johns.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. We have one item, this is actually a joint report for both finance and community parks, recs, and culture, has to do with the revised trail alignment design and a development charge credit agreement. So, I'm looking for a mover to open up the discussion, and we have Counselor Cruthers. And I am looking to that side of the room here, who wants to take this discussion? Mr. Marshall?
So, through you, Mr. Chair, I'll start it off. You mentioned it earlier, this is a joint report that's looking for permission to enter into a development charge credit agreement with Averton Homes for the construction of a trail that's required as part of their development. It's also, the report also provides details on the revised alignment of the trail and looks for council approval of that revised alignment. And with your permission, I'll pass it to General Manager Carmison to provide some more details on the trail.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor, in, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. In response to a public open house conducted earlier on this year, and significant individual and public consultation, staff made a number of adjustments to the design, including the alignment of the trail, the setbacks from private property lines, the trailhead locations, and, and enhancements to, to buffer planting and screening. At this time, staff have resolved all the items that were identified during the public consultation process, and we're seeking council approval to move forward with the credit agreement and, and the subsequent construction of the trail this summer for completion in the fall. Be happy to answer any questions related to the, to the revised trail alignment.
Thanks, Mr. Carmison, I'd show my committee colleagues any, yeah, Counselor Crone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, not so much a question, but I, just a comment, I wanted to thank Mr. Carmison and your staff for working through this. This was exactly how the consultation process was supposed to work. There was, there were folks in the community that were not crazy about some of the design concepts. You met with them, excuse me, you, you, you met with them, you listened, and you responded. And, you know, this, I think this shows the willingness of, of the town to work with our, our citizens and, and come out with a mutually agreeable situation and outcome, and, and thank you for doing that. I know it's hard to please everyone, but I, I think you did your best, and I, I know the folks in the neighborhood there will appreciate it, and I think it's going to be a nice trail that we're all going to be able to use for years and years to come. So, thank you very much to you and your staff for, for working so hard on this. I know it was a, a challenge, but you did a great job. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor, any other, yeah, Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to see this is coming forward, that we're going to be moving forward with building this trail. Unfortunately, I, I'm very disappointed to see that the trail connection to Viscount has been deleted, and I, and I understand the process that's been, that's there, and the ward counselors, or ward counselor is supportive of it. From my perspective, as, as a, a trail, someone who, who advocates for active transportation, it, it created an important link between two areas of the community that we, we hear a lot about keeping kids safe and road safety, and having a pathway through the valley and through the forest to link two neighborhoods is the perfect definition of that. And so, Mr. Chair, if it's possible, I, I would like to separate it out, I want to move forward with the, the agreement and authorize staff to move forward, but I don't want to approve the alignment. That's, I'd like an opportunity to vote against the, the alignment as presented in the report. Thank you.
Got it. Is anybody, does anybody else want to speak to this? Any committee members? Okay, so, Madam Clerk, help me out here, can I, can I read the, the first paragraph of the resolution and then skip the second paragraph and then continue on, and then we'll vote on the second paragraph after? Does that work?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct. So, what I've done on the screen before you, I've separated out the second clause, which talks about the trail alignment. So, initially, through you, Mr. Chair, Counselor Cruthers had moved the entirety of the motion, but it's been requested to be split. So, there is the three aspects of it in relation to the development credit charge agreement, and then this is separated out first.
Okay, do you wish that I read that whole thing?
It's up to council, I don't, I'm not hearing anybody saying yes to that, but-
No, okay, so, on the first resolution, all those in favor? Okay, so that motion carries, great, thank you. On the second resolution that would be moved by Counselor, or sorry, not moved by Counselor Roy DiClemente, do I have a mover for this second one? Yeah, Counselor Crone, thank you. All those in favor of this motion? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion carries. Is there an abstaining thing? I didn't think so. And then all those choosing not to participate, there we go. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to any items as they pertain to the finance committee? Our committee members? No. Mr. Marshall, any other further items?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I, I just kind of hot off the press, we've just been notified that our financial statements for 2021 have been awarded with the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Financial Reporting. It's our fourth year that we've received that award. We're going to bring some more information at our next council, we just learned about it fairly recently, so, so we're happy to receive that award.
Congratulations, Counselor Cruthers whispered to me, went the party, so you guys have worked very hard within your department and, yeah, all the, all the town, all the town benefits from your great work, so thank you for that in your department. Madam Mayor, back over to you.
While noting that the agenda items M through P have no reports, if there's no questions or updates, can we move to adjourn? By Counselor Roy DiClemente? All in favor? That's carried. And we adjourned at 4:34.
And we're here at six, right?
Yeah, at six. Yeah, at 6.